Thank you. Got it? Recording? So I'll call the meeting to order. And we'll begin with any public comment. If there is any. I'm just trying to scroll through my various windows. Does anyone have any comments on items that are not on the agenda? Okay.
Just that. It's not on the agenda, but we should talk about future workload.
Yeah, no, I'm aware of that. Thank you. That will be probably at the end. So. Okay, so let's dive right in. We have Shirley with us tonight to review the capital budget. And. Surely, I don't know if you, okay, good, there's a screen sharing thing going on. Okay. That's the agenda. Okay, great. Good start. I've already got it.
I think that's 90 pages.
Shirley, you're muted. Sorry about that. So I have to be at the select board at 7:30. So my thought was, you probably have gone through the capital budget. So I don't want to take your time to walk through this each project. But maybe if you wanted to. Voice your concerns over the capital budget or something you might want to see. That might be a better use of our time, but I'll. Do whatever you would like me to do.
Yeah, I think that that would be a good approach. I know that there are some concerns, particularly as they relate to energy. And so I'm going to suggest that Chapin take the lead on that because he has. Been the most vocal.
Okay, and I was vocal at the last meeting too. So there's some in the minutes and. Surely that it seemed like our message that we wanted more attention to energy was received at the level of the preamble, the comments on a lot of the budget items. Both building energy and. Vehicles. But. I realize with the fact that we couldn't see it till after I was actually able to watch much of it be presented to the select board. Before I was able to see it, that our request to see it earlier isn't being met. And probably because we're not the right body to be providing, to be an influencer, which is what we were trying to do. We have recommended as number one in the energy plan, that there be an energy coordinator and that that person be responsible for implementing the plan with guidance from the energy committee. And the plan is already written out. So. It probably is the responsibility of the energy coordinator that we don't have to do what we were trying to do. And so. Without being critical of what was prepared, I would just say there are significant gaps that show the need for an energy coordinator. And I could give a couple of examples. One is that the police in their presentation to the select board for their capital budget didn't mention electrical vehicles at all. And I hadn't been able to see the. The budget that we're looking at now at that point. And so I put in the chat, when are we going to see something about electrical vehicles? And at the end of their presentation, Eric asked that question. And then they made a fine discussion of, well, Essex has this and Richmond has that. And we think we ought to wait five years for us because we don't want to be a leader the way we are with a dog, comfort dog. Good discussion, but that only happened because I prompted with the question. And I, as a planning commissioner, was not able to see that budget until hearing it that night before we got it. So.
Can I just comment on that quickly? And maybe it wasn't at the meeting, but chief actually prior to that meeting has met with Essex because they just got their first two hybrid vehicles. So he's met with the chief and they'll be corresponding to see how those work out if they meet the needs for to maintain police operations. And so I know that chief's plan is to keep in close contact with Essex PD and see how those work. So when we go to look at our next vehicles, if that is certainly looking positive, they are looking for the electric vehicles and as part of that. Talking about the. Redoing the town hall parking lot would be to install the, I'll say, more efficient chargers for the police vehicles because they have so much equipment running in them all the time that they often leave them running. When they just come in for a short period of time because of the drain on the batteries. So I know that we are talking about looking at. And here's my lack of knowledge, but the faster charging units for the PD vehicles. So all of that is in discussion and like I just kind of watching how those hybrid vehicles perform. We are, I want to say we're not taking Richmond very seriously because they got the Tesla. And I don't even think that you could. Put someone in it if you had someone you had arrested and needed to transport. So they got some kind of. Incentive program on that one, but but they are certainly keeping their eye on it.
So that was apparent once I prompted with the question. And the response in the public forum was that we should be looking at it for five years out. When I got the document we're looking at now, it says two to five years.
Yeah, they are definitely keeping their eye on it.
And it's a level three charger. My point about that is if we had an energy coordinator, they would be helping with that. They would be helping with the grant writing with the evaluation. I sent something to the chief four or five years ago about electric police vehicles in another town. This is not new and it's not something we have to discover or be a follower. And our police vehicles get nine miles a gallon, I think, and they go about 60,000 miles a year. So I think that we're talking somewhere in the order of 6,000 gallons per vehicle of fossil fuel per year. And that deserves attention. And also the fueling is less expensive. If you can get past the initial cost, the fuel cost over the life of the vehicle is much less than gasoline. Yeah, so I feel like the movement is way too slow for what the energy plan has. It won't meet our goals and an energy coordinator would have helped further that. In terms of their thinking further on, it was good. They were thinking about charging stations and maybe a shed with maybe solar on it. But we should be right now designing a solar canopy for that back parking lot and talking with Green Mountain Power about having more battery storage on site, both for backup power. So we don't have run a diesel generator. And also just to get the design so it's trouble ready so that if funds are coming in, we can buy for them immediately. And I shouldn't say shovel ready, just design ready. And so to me, I just see that there's an effort. But the effort is not nearly what we had expected. And that was true in several areas. And there was only one area that I saw that was actually a new initiative. In other words, if we had an energy coordinator, they would have submitted a budget for things that are not in the different departments. And one of those that did show up was some chargers at the community parks. And. If we had a. A couple of charges at community parks is a drop in the bucket for our energy plan. Frankly, and was done as Eric said, because we could get, you could use ARPA money. And to me, we should be potentially applying for grants for those and then using the ARPA money for other things. And that's the kind of thought process that would come from an energy coordinator. And so I realized that while I was frustrated as a planning commissioner, not seeing the results that we had asked for, that the problem actually already has a solution, which is for the town to have an energy coordinator to push these things along faster. I could see that people were trying and were thinking about it. But we're falling short in my view. Thanks.
You're welcome. And I'm sure that topic will be discussed tonight at the.
Yeah. One other that, you know, our other goal that we talked about is making the town in our town plan. We have a strong push to make it more pedestrian friendly. And in the energy plan to require use of cars more often and having the second sidewalk plow and a person to operate it is right in line with those goals. And the select board has already asked for input from the public. They received tons of input saying, yes, do it. And then they postponed the purchase another year. And then this year it looked like it was still out there in 2024 rather than the 2023. So we, as a planning commission, support plowing our sidewalks. We've invested a lot in our sidewalks. Let's use them.
I'm just taking notes. Yep.
Okay, that's fine. Other comments about the capital budget that folks want to raise?
Chapin, can I summarize your comment about the sidewalk plow as do now?
Yes, absolutely ASAP. It shouldn't be put off. It's already been put off year after year. If anyone, the planning commission isn't in accord with that, I didn't, I'm not trying to. I think I'm speaking for all of us because it's what we have in the plan, but. I. I was making a little bit of an assumption.
Yeah, my, I just had one additional note. Kind of related to Chapin's comments. This was specifically about the EV chargers that Eric had proposed for park areas. And. The proposal was, as you said, this is a pretty small issue or. A small complaint, I guess, but. I, the suggestion was to put one at the Village Community Park behind WCS and the other at Catamount. And to me, that didn't make a lot of sense because although I love Catamount and use it all the time. Allenbrook Community Park has far more users and also a whole population of teachers and school staff and other folks who are much more likely to. You know, make use of an EV charger. It's also closer to the population center of the town. And so I just wanted to kind of put a little quick note in there that, you know, I think the Allenbrook Community Park should rise higher than Catamount. It's just, as I said, quite a small comment, but maybe in your. Feed, in our feedback, we can consider that.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you.
Can I add one other thing for your information, surely, and not something that's feedback you have to carry back? Which is that I know that you're probably aware that you, that power, right now by law, you can't charge from a charging station. You can't charge per kilowatt hour in a normal way. And I just want to point out that a level two charger on the whole will run about seven kilowatts. And a kilowatt costs about 15 cents. So that's about. Well, it winds up being on a per hour basis. It's not going to break the bank. So if the town installs them and just doesn't worry about charging and the extra cost of administrating charging costs for a while with level two chargers, that's just don't worry about is my advice. And eventually we'll have a system that works.
Yeah, yeah.
My car takes, on a level two, my car takes eight hours to charge and that cost me about $9 of electricity. No, $6 of electricity. Sorry.
Okay, other comments on the capital budget? Okay, did there, there was a memo composed, a draft memo? Did anybody have comments that they wanted to provide feedback on there or did make edits? There we go.
I did put edits in and then I felt like maybe I was being too strong. And so then I took some of them out. And on the most important one is that on the sidewalks that's coming up on the next page, I thought we should just say do it ASAP, which is what Shirley was just asking. You'll see my parenthetical comment at the end, just like, I'm wondering if we shouldn't just say we need a second sidewalk plow ASAP and leave it at that.
And Megan, do you have your comment in here about the?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I had put it in earlier today. So I, and I just saw it. Okay, great.
And that just coincides with the fact that right now, right, we're doing this whole project, a study for the Allenbrook Park build out. So it really does make more sense to go there.
Right, Shirley, is there anything else that you need from us?
There is nothing else that I need from you at this time, but I do have one question for you since you're more knowledgeable in this area than I. Just as a, not specifically as the town, but as a bigger issue. Is there anything like, so I have Vermont Electric Co-op and their electricity rates are through the roof compared to Green Mountain Power. Has anyone seen anything where the state is trying to do anything for residents who have, I'll just say the co-ops whose rate are much higher to sort of level, but to make it attractive to do, you know, electric vehicles?
You're probably the expert on this.
Yeah, I'm in touch a lot of those things and that hasn't been a major part of the discussion. What is a major part of the discussion is having lower rates for vehicle charging.
Yep.
And especially because it's so easy to control it, maybe say it's only going to happen between 10:00 PM and 4:00 AM or whatever. Unless you want to pay the higher rate and that's what Green Mountain Power already does with most of their vehicle chargers. They allow you to opt out if you want to charge during their high use times during their peaks. But they give you a lower rate if you don't. And that's what Burlington Electric does. So I'm thinking that's going to be the norm rather than seeing a lower rate. Because in fact, Vermont Electric Co-op delivers fewer kilowatt hours with the same number of miles of of wires because it's more rural and general. And so I can understand that it may actually cost them more to deliver it. However, if you're generating or storing with a battery or so forth locally, you're saving them money because their transmission lines don't need to handle that electricity that's not going onto the grid. So that's why those kinds of programs are generally saving the utilities money. And Green Mountain Power has been a leader and Vermont Electric Co-op has been a follower, but.
Yeah.
I think that's the general direction, but not on the lower cost per se. Because the Public Service Board listens to their applications every year for rates and that process is in place. I don't think that's, I haven't heard discussion of that changing.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a pretty packed agenda tonight and we're going to let Shirley go off to the select board meeting. Thank you very much. And. Best of luck in with the select board.
Your meeting as well. I know you have a lot to accomplish.
Okay.
Good luck.
Bye. Okay, so we at this point can move on to form based code. And it looks like the first topic within that is the the process and public hearing timeline. Matt, is that something that you want to introduce or is that someone else?
I'll give a quick intro into that and sort of how it leads into what's on your agenda tonight. First, I apologize. In about eight minutes, I've got to run next door to the select board for a little bit as well. We're talking about a potential impact fee waiver for the Champlain Housing Trust Affordable Housing Project. And I'm giving the select board an update on the commission's progress on form based code and highlighting for them some of the sort of the big questions that I think the planning commission and staff kind of want to get a little feedback from the select board on as the project progresses and rolls ultimately toward a public hearing process. So on the agenda tonight, we have three items set for an initial review. These are the last three chapters that we have not talked about individually. Parking and loading, building functions and administration. And of these, parking and loading probably has the most content to it. Building functions is essentially the allowed uses in the district and how they work. You know, first floor versus second floor in buildings and things like that. And administration talks about the way that permits would actually be issued under the form based code. And it is, in a general sense, a more rapid and administrative process as drafted than the current DRV process. Then identify. What has to happen to the existing zoning bylaw for form based code to work? So the form based code area functions as an overlay over the existing zoning district boundaries and preempts the requirements of those districts where it exists for the most part. But there's a little bit to go over there about. What we've had to do to the existing development bylaw chapters to make the form based code fit without undoing some of the other recent work of the commission, primarily the the setting aside of the mixed use commercial district is one of two districts in town where cannabis retail is allowed. Means you have a boundary that is a district partially in and partially out of the form based code district where there's a little bit of extra administrative work to establish cannabis retail. That's true regardless of which side of that line you're on, if you're in the MUCs. So the idea from the staff here was to be able to go to the select board eventually and say, all that other stuff you just did, we're not, you know, we're not touching the cannabis boundaries. It's kind of a hot button issue that stays as it is. Going with that theme of things being more administrative, some other highlights in the bylaw that we might talk about tonight. The growth management allocation process is proposed for the form based code district to be co-located with the permit process. In other words, rather than the once a year competitive hearing, allocation would be given to residential projects upon the issuance of their certificate of conformance, which is their permit under the form based code. Then, you know, we do have a couple of regulating plan and map sections that we looked at last time that we wanted to wrap up and review. And also our discussion about public realm and streets. And the big message I want to give to you before 7:28 tonight is collectively, we believe that every document, every draft, chapter, map, diagram and bylaw edit that's necessary to make this a whole package to go into the public hearing process has now been created is here. In a, in a form that is refined enough that the commission could direct the staff tonight to turn this into the public hearing process. And if you were to ask us to do that, we would set it up to begin at the February 1st meeting. Things in the draft could certainly still be changed and we would expect would be changed during that hearing process. It doesn't, it doesn't close the book on making any changes, but procedurally it takes a step in the direction of adoption. And it just sort of advances the calendar on the project. A couple of the bigger hot button issues that go back to our discussion of the vision plan are also some of the issues that I am going to go ask the select board for some feedback on starting tonight. We did not link my memo to the select board on this agenda. Megan, I shared it with you by email. It's on the January 4th agenda for the select board, but I'll share it around with this group at the end of the day. But. You know, we will be sort of trying to check in with the folks who will eventually see this to make sure that if it is transmitted to the select board, nobody's asking for a 180 on one of the major components of the code at the last minute. We want to, we want to catch that now or get a chance to explain ourselves if it's just a matter of needing to inform the decision makers of more of the nuance of what we're doing. So that's my big, big picture introduction. Everything's there in a, enough of a draft form that staff's comfortable warning a hearing if planning commission wants us to. It's up to you folks if you want to do that. There's a bunch of stuff to discuss tonight. I thought that I would turn this over to Jeff, who's on the meeting to start off with the initial review sections, parking and loading, building functions, administration. And I'll bug out of here for a little bit to talk with the select board. And Chapin's got his hand up.
Yeah, I see that. Go ahead, Chapin. And then we'll turn it right over to Jeff. Thank you, Matt.
Before Jeff takes it, I just wanted to say that I. I personally had asked for us to be more involved and we have been, and it's been a heck of a lot of work. But I really appreciate the amount that we've been able to be involved and the participation by our staff and by Jeff and Taylor. The sort of, I feel like I understand why things are the way they are, even where I don't agree with them. And so I'm more prepared to defend it at public hearings. And I feel like we've been given a good opportunity and it frankly, it saturated even me. And I'm willing to go ahead with it without it being more perfect because there's such a benefit to having it in place at all. But I would like to immediately turn around and deal with some of what were listed early as friction issues on the vision and the regulating plan. So I don't want to stop working on it, but I do want to get it moved forward and I support doing that.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let's go ahead and dive into our initial review of chapters or sections, I guess, six, seven and eight, which thankfully. Yes, go ahead, Sheila. Hi.
Hi, this is Sheila. I'm on the phone. I apologize.
That's okay.
I did want to just ask one other broad question and I also, similar to Chapin, do not want to slow this down. But we did talk a couple of meetings ago about affordable housing and. Putting some pieces in around that not necessarily requirements, but really trying to make sure we have an eye on that. And I just wanted to know. Where that was and, and if we've had any. Ideas brought back to us and I'm sorry if I've missed them. Because I would love if we tend to include something in our initial. Draft, even if it's a placeholder that says we are working on it. I just, I would feel, it would feel strange to me to go for without something there again, even if that's a placeholder.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much for mentioning that. Sheila, Matt and I met yesterday to have our kind of pre. Commission meeting, meeting. And, and the issue of affordable housing came up. One. One fairly quick strategy is actually what Matt is going to talk to select board about tonight, which is the potential of getting rid of impact fees for the CHT project specifically, the hotel that's being converted and by Champlain, Champlain Housing Trust. And so one thing that we talked about as a possibility moving forward would be to get rid of other impact fees for other projects that included some, you know, level of affordable housing. Because those impact fees can really add up quite a lot. We also discussed, you know, that the fact that. As a commission, we should probably consider whether we want to. Have a conversation about inclusionary zoning and the, you know, the larger issues that would be part of that kind of conversation. And so it's definitely on the radar screen. I, I don't know that there is anything specific in our current form based code that would either preclude or incentivize affordable housing, except for the obvious fact that it, it stimulates a lot of residential expansion and a diversity of residential options, which is a generally a good thing, such that there may be more affordable options and we're increasing the supply overall, which would address some of the, the cost issues and really actually at a regional level. Does that keep you happy for the moment, Sheila? And I really do appreciate you raising it.
I don't know if I'm happy, but I will, I'll be mollified for today.
Okay, mollified then. All right, that's great. And please know that it is definitely on my radar screen and, and on Matt's. And so. You know, I think we can certainly address that in, in future conversations. Okay. Any other broad questions before we turn this over to Jeff? Okay, thank you for joining us, Jeff, and we will ask you to take it away.
All right, that'd have to be maybe a tiny bit of a cowboy.
All right, I have to be maybe a tiny bit of a cowboy on the affordable housing issue. Know that this, with this plan, the public sector is creating a lot of value on the land. I don't know that some of the landowners understand that, but you're creating a lot of value. So don't be afraid to skim a little off the top for workplace housing and such. All right, parking. I want to do a very brief run through to, I think, get us put the the parking issue in perspective. I know everybody keeps a copy of the the vision plan by their bed and skims through it at night before they go to sleep like I do. But that's a good place to look back at some of the original info and the idea that there's a lot of parking out there right now not getting used. So that's the position that we start in. There's been in the last 10 years and and it's really accelerating new thinking about parking and just the kind of weirdness of the way we've been doing it has big impacts on everything. And a lot of thought that maybe that's the market could and the private sector could figure some of that out on their own. Don Schut's a great guy to read, but there are tons of others. Certainly, we're moving away from this, far away from this, which is like the worst human environment possible. And this isn't a great example, but this is an example I found of a kind of development where they have the parking is behind the buildings, on the street, behind the buildings, where it can be shared very efficiently. You don't have spaces balkanized from the ground, it might, and this is a maybe a little better look at that. It's a shared parking area, can be used very efficiently. And then getting a little more abstract, but really specific about our plan. Remember, last meeting, I showed you that that new green that we put on Juniper Lane just south of of the Maple Tree Place. And quick idea, in Taft Corners, we've got a on-street parking everywhere, almost everywhere. And then within the blocks, there're going to be these big kind of parking sinks. Now, that's not all that's going to be in there. We've also talked, there might be some green area, charging stations, et cetera. But this is the fundamental kind of abstract setup that we have here that really supports shared parking and kind of a set of goals here. Big problem with parking, and it's just has been nationwide for a while. We have all this kind of balkanized parking so that every business is preserving parking that they own it, which means that it doesn't get used half the time. Shared parking is much more efficient. And there's, there's going to be a version of this, a PDF of this up on the website. So I won't, I won't torture you by reading through all of it. But shared parking is super efficient and it benefits everyone. And here's really the big graphic. On the left, unshared spaces. This is a situation where everybody, every business, every residence has, you know, basically, all the parking spaces they need, they're reserved, and you can't park in their space, which means that, and see, there's a 24-hour period on the bottom from seven to 20. I guess that's a military person, eight o'clock at night. And what happens is a lot of those spaces spend a lot of time sitting empty because their car is somewhere else, maybe in one of the other zones. When you have shared parking, you really have all this, that white space is all capacity gained. And in this calculation, and this is a ULI document that email me or for our bug staff and we can get you a a copy of this report, suddenly, look, 38% more capacity is opened up. Kind of that's like a huge gain in efficiency that you have there and reduction in the amount of parking that you need to require. And you know that parking is environmentally kind of a disaster. It sits there, takes up space, it does not generate tax revenue. It just costs money. And that's my last slide. Believe it or not, really, truly short.
It may not generate tax revenue, but it can generate electricity.
Well, there's plenty of room for charging stations, Chapin. We'll still have those and on-street.
I'm talking about solar generation. It can, that space can be generating electricity.
I hope you don't think that's the highest and best use of them. I mean, we're going to have plenty of parking.
I'm talking about solar canopies over the parking.
We still, we've still got plenty of room for that and on the buildings and and solar farms. So trying to rearrange my screens.
Okay, so do you want to take questions on the parking section? Is that your?
Yes, let's want to just roll right into parking.
Sure. Oh, okay, good. That's fine. Yeah.
Can I ask a question, which is just more of our thing? How does this interact with all the new parking rules that we just had the select board adopt? Are those for a different section? Will these override those? Like, I just noticed they're a little bit different.
Whatever. Yeah, yeah, Alex, these these would, within Taft Corners, these would be the regulations. So they are, they are somewhat different.
Kate, do you have a question?
Yeah, or comment, I guess. So I don't disagree with what Jeff, you were just saying. And but these make me concerned because I do not want a Burlington issue coming up in Williston. You can't park anywhere. The on-street parking is awful. The off-street parking is unfindable. And it's just not convenient to go there. It's not pleasant to go there. And this, there's no minimum parking requirement. There's no minimum. I mean, I don't know. There's, I'm not seeing where the parking is coming from. You seem to have a lot of parking listed on your little graph there, but these words don't seem to be telling me that. So.
Yeah, I will make the point, and then I'll go to specifically what you said. The situation right now in Taft Corners is generally not very pleasant either. The parking comes in and it's, well, first of all, there are two kinds, shared, shared and reserved. The minimum, for example, residential has a minimum 0.25 reserved. You have to have that much, sorry, shared and a
But a residential.
1.25 reserved and 0.25 shared. So 1.5, say, for per bedroom, basically. That's a some, so it's a combination of the two. So the two kinds of minimums, commercial has and has its own set. There's a gimme for small commercial, 5,000 square feet, which is pretty tiny. That's trying to foster small businesses. The others have, it's really, I guess, in terms of of the reserve parking, there's not a minimum. There is a minimum for shared parking. And to some degree, you know, beyond the beyond these minimums, it's left open to the market. On the second page, sorry, third page, there's a note, and I left it pink to kind of jump out. There's, there's no maximum limit on the amount of shared parking. So if someone's building here, they can put in a lot of shared parking, which is the most efficient for you to park in. So it's, it's, it's pushing the shared parking in several ways. And it's, it's giving the 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 market an ability to make some determinations beyond that.
Jeffrey, can I, can I make sure I understand that correctly? So what you're saying is this is a significantly reduced amount of dedicated parking, like what you're calling reserve parking compared to the the what we just passed, you know, a couple of weeks ago. But you're saying what you expect is that more shared parking would be available to residential units? And thus, we don't need that, basically, like residential units, there should be, in theory, enough parking for everybody. What I'm seeing here is like, if if it was all one-bedroom apartments, there wouldn't be enough parking even for every person to have a car.
And a lot of those might have two people in them with two vehicles.
Yeah, this is like the 1.4 cars per household, like numbers that we went over that made us determine the last parking that we just voted on seems to have sort of be thrown out the window here, and we're headed towards not just, you know, the, a minimum that just doesn't compatible with a place that snows eight months out of the year. People have cars. You can't really live without a car in Vermont.
Yeah, no, 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 nobody is saying the car is going to go away. Nobody's going away. That's a fool's game. And so don't, nobody's saying that. But what we are saying is people will have fewer people, people will have, because in the near term, that place is drowning in parking. In the near term, it's like five years, maybe 10 years till you exhaust that. Also, the market is going to build more, has the ability to build more shared parking. We're just putting the big brakes on the reserved.
Jeff, can we slow down just a little bit? And let's talk about this one specific example of an efficiency. And let's talk about for that efficiency, what's the minimum? What's the maximum? And what's the shared requirement? So, so for for the efficiency one bedroom, and the minimum standard here is 0.5 spaces, correct?
0.5 space, that is for
Reserve park.
Reserve, and then it has 0.25 shared, so 0.75.
Okay, so 0.75 reserved for one efficiency unit. And that's a minimum standard. Have to provide at least that. And then if you scroll down, let's talk about what that maximum standard is.
Which is?
Like on page three?
Yeah.
So there, we're saying for for a one-bedroom, just reserved, just reserved, max standard is one. And then for shared, what's our, what's our max, max standard?
No max.
No max. So, you know, I think, I think the point we're trying to make here is that, you know, we're, we're, we're having a minimum requirement of of almost one space at the bare minimum for each each efficiency unit. But in terms of of shared, you know, spaces, you know, the developer, the market can decide what that right size is. That, that's kind of the point. Yeah, I understand. You know, I'll just repeat the comment, which is we just had this debate and we decided that a larger number minimum and no maximum, still letting the market decide the maximum, would be a better experience than this. And I feel like we're just rehashing a debate we had.
Well, well, this is for a different, Alex, this is for what will be. Well, even right now it is because it's a C parking, but this is a really specific context. It will be in the future, and this is, there's this now versus then. It's not going to become instant. But this will be a place that does a great deal of, it lowers the demand. It's a more walkable environment. It will support, as it builds, it will increasingly support and get better transit. So it's a, it's a different area now. And in the start, we've got this, you know, desert of parking, sitting mainly unused, even on Black Friday.
I understand. That, that's, that's an area that's entirely commercial, right? Like, you're, you're sort of comparing apples to oranges. We're talking about residential here. But the, the little graph you show with the 25% open areas, not like there's apartments against those. But all I'm saying is, you've had this, like, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I disagree completely. Like, I think we should keep what we just voted on and make this align with that, because I think this is just too little reserved residential parking for what it, for Vermont, right?
Just what, what, what's that number? Sorry, I can't remember. What's that number?
I can't remember off the top of my head either, but it was, it was closer to like, you know, 1.4, 1.3 or something units, not 0.75, right?
Yeah, I will say, Alex, though, that that conversation, we knew at the time that things would be different in the form-based code area. And so when we were having that conversation about parking, there was an understanding that the form-based code zone would, would have some different standards because of its very different intensity of land use and its different mix, as well as the availability of transit, the walkability, and then the mix of household types, which, you know, among which there will be people who do not have a car at all and for various reasons. So, so I, you know, I, I take your point, but I, you know, I, I think there was a pretty clear understanding that we were discussing an area that was not including this, this zone, because we knew this was coming. We knew that parking was going to be a big part of the form-based code area.
Can I, Megan?
Sorry, hold on, Shayla, because Kate has had her hand up, and then I'm happy to turn to you. Okay, go ahead, Kate.
Um, well, I, I kind of disagree. I, I agree with Alex. We did discuss this, and it's just as much a concern in that area as it is in other areas. If, you know, a lot of one-bedroom apartments, you need to wait, I'm sorry. A lot of one-bedroom apartments will have two people with cars, and they need to be able to park. And if they can't, then they're either going to not want to live there because, so I don't. This is concerning. 0.75 spots for residential is not enough. And and as far as the, it may be a desert of parking at this point, but the fact of the matter is, people who live in the end of Finney Crossing, even once this is all built up, may not want to walk when it's one degree outside to even Shaw's or, you know, Best Buy. So, I mean, I think we have to consider that and understand that, that this is Vermont. There is going to be times when people don't want to walk or can't walk for time constraints. And so I'm, I'm not, I'm not in approval of these numbers, but I'll leave it at that.
Hey, Shayla, do you want to go ahead and then we'll hear from Chapin?
Um, so one thing that I'm thinking about here is it's sort of, and tell me if I'm thinking about this wrong, Jeff, but I, I kind of feel like we're paying down the parking a little bit, like, we need. It's not just that we, like, we need to shrink the amount of parking. And so by only requiring this and having this minimum for now, I, I hear what you're saying. Kate, I, I, I just, I think that we have to start with something that is less so that we get to a place where it is much more balanced, and then we can change it again. I mean, it's not, this is not something that's going to happen overnight. You know, and we've already talked, I mean, Chapin just said, like, we can, we're gonna, you know, have to revisit it even immediately for some stuff. But I, I feel like we should, we need to reduce greatly what's being built for parking until we get to a more balanced place and and then potentially revisit what the number is. And and then also have a better idea of what the mix of commercial and housing is and what the growth rate is and, you know, what is happening on the ground. Because what we know right now is on the ground, there's way too much. And, you know, I don't disagree with you at all about, you know, being really frustrated about parking in Burlington. I have had that same experience, and that's not what I want. But I don't, I think that we have to get to a more balanced place. And I think an option to get there is to, you know, go the other way for a while and let it, let it even out.
Okay, thanks, Shayla. Yeah, okay, go ahead, Kate.
I mean, I, that's, that's, that's a point well taken, Shayla. I would say that I, I think it's just too, too extreme. This is too extreme. What, what is in Maple Tree Place may be well, way too much, but Cottonwood Crossing looks okay. You know, I mean, I think people, I think developers have a lesson, their parking kind of on their own or whatever, for whatever reason. But, and I don't disagree that we should limit it. It just, this seems extreme to me.
Okay, Chapin, go ahead.
I just wanted to remind folks that our, the changes we just made have a clause that says that people can do less if they look at shared parking in the, within 600 feet or something. There's a formula, a whole, a complex spreadsheet. And so we didn't set a, a minimum that's as low as it sounds like with the 1.4 because essentially, we were allowing for exactly this kind of situation. essentially we were allowing for exactly this kind of situation where it might be shared with commercial that uses it at a different time of day. So I just wanted to remind that we're not comparing exactly the same thing. Also, um, the, the the hamlet where Ron Bomer lives has a parking problem because they tell the residents they can't park in the street and they don't give them enough with their houses and those are three bedroom houses, a lot of them. And so I do see where it can be a problem if you don't supply enough. One issue, in other words, I'm generally in favor of less because I see us moving in that direction as a social, as a society, but how fast we get there, I don't know. And so I'm not arguing for a particular number, but I did want to say if, in terms of your comment about Burlington, Kate, because I agree with you there too. If we don't put meters on these parking spaces, then employees at the shops will park in them all day. And so I'm, are we assuming, Jeff, that these will be metered?
The, the one thing that you'd need to meter, make sure I'm not still muted, is, is on street. You, then there's a lot of information out about the, the, this common sense of metering those to try and get turnover. Inside the block, not so much. And in parking lots off-street, not so much. That's the, you want to encourage people to go there. But on-street, you want to, you don't want your employee to park there and sit there for eight hours. You want that to turn over so that people coming in can park in it.
Jeff, can I just piggyback on that real quick? I, I want to leave the debate about, about the number to the, the PC members, but I I do think there is some element, regardless of the number that we, the PC settles on, but I, I do think there is some element of that this, this is going to be a remaining issue regardless. You know, this is going to be an issue. We're going to have to come back to you regardless and you know, I think, I think one of the things that the municipality will have to think about in five years and 10 years and 15 years, much like you're thinking about park space now, is thinking about public parking. You know, that's not an immediate concern right now, obviously, because of the amount of parking that's, that's there. And I think the parking that'll get built through these standards will, will hopefully serve those structures that, that get built adequately. But, but in the future, there might be, there might be a need to think about public parking somewhere in task force.
Okay, thanks Taylor. Chapin, is that a residual hand or?
No, it's, I, I, I still would like to talk about other things, but I don't want to do that until we're through with this part and Jeff had his hand up, I think, for this part.
Well, yeah, and I don't, I don't want to steamroll or, or the concerns about parking, but just a little word about the private sector. And the idea that they can, they can figure it out. Also, in this location, if you look at the ownership pattern, if this was like one, one spot in a block where the owner might think, I can build here and have no parking and my parking will get in other people's faces. These are huge tracts of land owned by, you know, the landowners are certainly going to be thinking about what they build and what its effect on the rest of their land that's all around it. So I'm actually worried about the, the private sector building too much parking, although the code makes sure that, you know, it's in back behind the building, so it could eventually be absorbed, but I think that's a real, I think that's a real factor.
Is it okay to move on?
I just wanted to pause and ask if Jill had any comments on this, just to make sure that we've heard from everybody.
No, I'm, I'm more of the line that I think it'll kind of balance out over time and that we'll probably revisit it and it, we have enough as is, so.
Do you mind if I just make one comment?
Oh, go ahead.
Um, so I just did sort of like a quickie analysis of three recently approved projects and how they met the current bylaw standards and how they would meet this new standard. And I believe all three of them could meet this new standard with the assumption that all of their parking, unless it was marked reserved, it was shared, considered shared parking, that is, anybody could park there. So those projects included a healthy living, the Blair Park Hotel and the CHT apartments. So just, because I think probably all of those utilize some form of a parking reduction for shared parking or proximity of transit or on-street parking.
Okay, thanks for that comparison. It's helpful. Chapin, you had another comment? Or did you want to?
If moving on, there are three areas in this section that I have a comment. The first is on the previous page, the middle picture, that I think is supposed to show interior parking. But the first thing I noticed about it is somebody's parked on the sidewalk, blocking pedestrians and so I don't think it's a good example, unless I'm misinterpreting the picture and its purpose. It doesn't have a caption per se.
Okay, I'll refrain from making some joke, Chapin, that that's actually, the people are supposed to be on the asphalt and the cars on the brick sidewalks, but but that's not true. Yeah, I'm guilty. I looked at that and I have to say, I'm a little, you know, I must be some kind of an urban guy. I looked at that and it didn't bother me because, you know, it's tight inside the block. We will, we will fix that, I promise.
Thanks. And I would like the bottom picture to be one that has a solar canopy over the parking because it's a perfect example of where there's plenty of solar, obviously hitting that parking lot. And it's solar canopy.
Do you have such a?
I, I sent you a link to, I added five pictures of solar canopies.
I'll look, the, the, the thing we want this one to show though is something that's clearly a block interior. I'll take another look at those.
No, so no, I do not have one that I've taken of an interior block because I haven't experienced that, but.
No, it's, it's a really it's pain in the neck, you know, trying to find pictures that match and that, that's my.
What I would say is the bottom one, the bottom one, it's not clear that it's an interior block either. It, it, you can see there's buildings on the right and it's not a road, but you can't tell what's on the left. But but I think with the caption, it's clear. So that's, that's my first area. The second is on the next page on bicycle parking. The first thing on the next page on the left there, bicycle.
Yes.
It, it generally good, but I didn't see anything about e-bikes and bike share infrastructure. And I thought we should say something there about that for, in the biking, bicycle parking section. Does that make sense?
Yes, I'll do what I can and I, but I definitely know because there's one about, you know, 75 feet away from me, a bike share.
So it, if there's, if it's somewhere else in the plan, that's fine, but since we're talking about parking and specifically bicycle local parking, I thought we should reference that.
At, at a minimum, we can mention it in the caption.
Yeah. And the third is on the next page where we talk about surface parking lot planting. And actually I have a minor question on the section before, which is G, or no, it used to be G. Yeah, it is still G, on areas exempt from off-street parking. Located within an 800-foot walking distance of a transit station. And is that what you intended? Or did you mean bus stop or is?
Intended transit, that's meant to be transit station. We did have discussions about doing something additional. Actually brought up by Melinda's look when she did those comparisons. Some reduction, we talked about a reduction for being near a bus station, which would be a lot of places, but on the other hand, the numbers are so low.
Well, and, and bus stations can move around, whereas transit centers won't. So I'm okay with that. It was, it caught me by surprise. I wasn't looking for it. I don't have a comment, I'm just surprised. But on the next one, the H, surface parking lot planting, I just think we need to add something about solar canopies. And I think I would like to see solar canopies required on all open parking that has any solar, you know, has sun. And I, I don't know if I'm not clear or if my, the initial reaction to me talking about wanting to be sort of a solar theme. You know, as our energy plan says, we have to triple our solar production in town. And doing it over land that's already paved and disturbed is the least impact way to do it. And it also changes the look. And so I would like that to be a theme and I, it so far hasn't become a theme. And so I'm, once again, I'm wanting it to be.
We do, we, we have added a number of places, mentioned of it. I mean, we have put a lot of little things in, but we have stopped short of requirements, kind of a concern about breaking the back. And also, if that's going to happen, it should happen. Ideally, those things wouldn't be just a burden on this one place, but more townwide.
There should be a system where somebody putting a solar canopy on their parking is not losing money. And in fact, people like to park under them because their car isn't as hot in the summer when they get in it and the car isn't as covered with snow in the winter when they get in it. And if there's chargers there too and they're driving electric, they'll like it even more. And so to me, solar canopies on the parking and I, and I put examples in my shared album. But that, to me, it enhances both the appearance and the functionality of the parking area and it should not, plus there's electricity being generated which is going to the owner.
Well, now, do you understand, we did, we did put in specific mention of, of being ready for those things. A lot of the stuff you're talking about on-street as well as in the parking lots in the middle of the block. So the skids are greased for it. There's nothing here, we mentioned it and there's nothing in here preventing it. And there's actually, I mean, it sounds to me like there's going to be an increasing market incentive for somebody to have solar over their parking areas.
Exactly. I, I think it's the future. And I think we may as well do it now because it's like people that want to put in chargers and they have to dig up their asphalt parking lots. If you, if you plan for the solar canopy now, you'll have the infrastructure in place and it you can, you can upgrade it later.
Chapin, the one thing I'll, I'll mention is, is, you know, one, well, we've covered this point before, but you know, we can't require the actual solar on solar be built. We can require that it be solar ready. We just, we don't have the authority to, to require the solar actually be installed. And then I, you know, I'll work with Jeff to figure this out. I mean, I'm, I'm worried about cost with smaller parking lots and smaller lots, you know, think back to you know, our discussion about, about, you know, essentially maximum footprint size and, you know, maximum structure size, you know, we're, we're, we're talking about a built form here. We're, we're going to have a lot of relatively small compared to existing apartment buildings, smaller structures with, with smaller parking lots probably. And I, I, you know, I, I guess my, my, my thought was, you know, bang for your buck. You're going to get more requiring retrofits of existing very large parking.
Yes. Yes, solar, sun, sun common sells ones for your own private, you know, two-car turnaround in your driveway that are beautiful post and beam design. And I just feel like I would, I'm wanting this to be a theme one way or the other. Thanks.
I'll just, I'm just going to pile on. I have my hand up, but I, I, I agree with Jeffrey and with, with Taylor. And I'll also say that, you know, I, I remember discussions 30 years ago about how geothermal is going to be everywhere. Right? Like guessing what the future is in 50 years of energy generation, requiring it over top of parking. I'm not for, I would let the, the market sort that one out.
Okay, Kate had her hand up.
Yeah, I, I wanted to talk about that section G. Because I'm not sure I'm getting it. No off-street parking shall be required for development which occurs and is located within 800 feet of a transit station. So you could have a apartments, you could have, you know, commercial, you can have any type of development and have no parking for them.
So, so first off, that by transit station there, I think we mean transit center. So we're talking that one facility that, that may be located by Shaw's, correct, Jeff?
Yes.
Not a stop, not a stop. So we're going to put transit center there instead of station. It's going to be that, that one facility. And so here, the requirement is there, there's no requirement for, for I'm sorry, I misread it. I should probably keep my mouth shut. Is that, is that true? Then Jeff, no requirement for off-street?
Correct. So it's a big gimme, but you're, you are, yes, you got it correctly, Kate.
Okay. It seems like, why would? So are you assuming that nothing of merit can be built within 800 feet of that particular space? Or what if it's at, what if they put a transit, whatever, center in a different place?
Well, this says if you're within 800 walking, 800 feet walking distance, you don't have to have on off-street parking. But again, I would point out, it's, it's a, it's a reward and, and actually the numbers are when people live within like a quarter mile of a transit station. The capture for people's transit is huge and that's, this is 800 feet. But on the other hand, it's going to be, I, I don't see anybody in the foreseeable future having no off-street parking. All the developers we talked to, they want, some are pushing it to close to less, you know, close to one, one something, but it's, it's just under two. But you know, this, this, the market is still at work. And there's no single lot owner here who's going to screw his neighbors because his neighbors are the same owner. These people are going to, you know, they're going to be thinking about the big picture. So, you know, it's, it's a reward for being next to the transit station. Because the, the ease of getting across the street is so high.
Yeah, but you're still places you need to go with a car.
And there will be, there will be parking, just the government isn't saying exactly what you have to do with that parking.
Well, the, well, the government, if you're talking about us, are saying that you don't have to have any parking and that, I, that.
It's saying, it's, it's not, it's not, I'm sort of tongue in cheek, but it's not, Big Brother isn't telling, isn't managing your parking for you. It's, you know, letting you do it. It's, it's giving you the option here to not build any.
Right. I, I mean, what I'm saying is I don't agree with that. I, I think if you're going to build something there, then there needs to be some sort of parking set aside for it. I mean, unless it's like a very small type of commercial store, I suppose, but I mean, something larger.
No, no, to be honest, yeah, and, and to your point. No, it would be, other than, you know, there's where the transit center is, there's some limitations on what's buildable area within 800 feet of it. But it's, it's really part of the same system, except for that immediate block. There's perimeter blocks with a, a big parking sink in the back. So I but basically you are correct.
That's true, but I mean, it, it, they could put a transit center in a different location. We don't even know that. I mean, that's been talked about, maybe that is where it comes, but it could be somewhere else and it could be right next to a residential building. And then they say there's no parking because we don't need to put parking in here. I understand you say that they won't want to do that and hopefully they wouldn't. But I, I don't think you should leave it to a developer to, to decide that, because then you have a whole bunch of apartments that what people can't use because they can't park their car. Or they're parking on the street and then everyone else.
I, I would say you know, and I don't want to argue it too much because the numbers can be adjusted, but nobody's going to, no one would, I don't think anyone would build zero parking unless times have changed to the point where they felt that made sense.
Just for context too, on 800 feet, you know, from, from the area owned by the town that, you know, we're planning on being, the town is planning on you know, being the, the site of the future transit center. We're talking to about the front of like McGilloways, that's about 800 feet.
And also you have to have a transit center before, so.
Okay, Emily has had her hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't mean to backtrack too much, but on Chapin's point about the solar canopy, I was reading back through the energy plan and I think the capacity that could be generated the capacity that could be generated with solar farms and engaging with landowners that are on three-phase power. A parking lot canopy in a center lot might generate, you know, a handful or a few dozen kilowatt hours. Whereas that large acre solar farm could generate much more of the capacity. And also some of those other goals about existing commercial buildings, existing industrial buildings, getting them to add solar. So I think with the energy coordinator and the energy plan, that's probably one of those top advocacy roles of engaging with those other landowners outside the form-based code area. And I'll try to get a picture of the new solar canopy that Lawson's Finest Liquids put in by Big Picture Theater. Hopefully this weekend.
Okay, um, before we go back to Chapin, I just want to provide us a quick time check. That we're at eight thirteen and according to our agenda at eight fifteen, we need to be starting to talk about merging the form-based code into the current bylaw. We do have two more sections to go, building functions, which is section seven, and administration, which is section eight. So I would just like to plant that in everybody's head. I realize that we may not have agreement on the parking issue right now. And I'm, you know, I think we could, you know, reopen that discussion. But we also really need to get through those other sections tonight. Emily, did you have something else to add? Or is that an old hand?
No, that was it.
Okay, all right.
I could do five seconds, which is, I don't care if section G is there or not, if that helps resolve it.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, uh, let's, let's kind of, um, I feel like we need to kind of sit with some of this parking question a bit. This may be some lever points that would be really helpful to hear from the public as well. And, uh, and I think we can, you know, certainly bring this to a public hearing and receive feedback and, you know, potentially amend it, tweak some of these numbers as needed. And so let's, let's move on at this point. Jeff, if you want to take us into the next section.
Yes, and I'd like people to be thinking about if there's a, Megan mentioned a tweak, if there's a step, a compromise that would make you more comfortable, if not completely comfy with where these are, because there's no magic about uh, an exact number or point four or point two-five, those can, those can shift around. But that said, uh, I'm sorry, do we do functions next or admin? Probably functions. Functions. I characterize this as, uh, the form-based code has some really general categories. It doesn't micromanage exactly what kind of commercial you're doing or, you know, density things like that. It's got a lot of freedom within it, within the uses. And the way the uses are set up to my mind is there's some basic categories uh, and their definitions in the back that set the, set what those are. And then the zoning administrator, if something comes in, that's, uh, the zoning administrator will kind of determine which use it fits. Uh, and for most things, it'll be obvious. It's, you know, it's a, it's a residential or it's, or it's a retail, et cetera. But there will be things that are a little bit on the edge. So that, that, rather than have two thousand definitions, which is a common absurdity. These have simple categories and, and license to think on the part of the zoning administrator. Any, um, any specifics? Chapin.
You can count on me. On that chart that's on the left side there, do we want to specify below grade as well as ground story and upper stories?
You know, we've never had to do that. I don't think we need to, because actually, we're not, uh, we're something, most things except parking are truly below the, uh, below grade. And I don't know where we talk about the poss, I, I think we mentioned the possibility for what we call English basement apartments. But those are about half in and half out. So I, I think it's clear that those come under the, the ground story.
Okay, and then, um, we don't list classrooms. And when I think of classrooms, when I'm, I'm thinking about Vermont, a Vermont college, having more classrooms in surrounding buildings as they're built. And I didn't know if we should specifically say that.
There's a, there's, I think there's a, that's a tee up for Taylor to answer. Basically, they're by, by statute, they can do whatever they want.
Yeah, well, well, yeah, I think what we decided, sorry, we went back and forth on this issue for a while. And I think what we settled on was they're going to fall into the institutional use category. And I think that should be backed up by the definition of institutional. Yeah, institutions. Uh, no, it's actually institution. And, and you know, we can, we can throw the statutory reference there too. Yeah, Jeff, let's clean up the definition there a little bit between civic use and institutions. We've got a little bit of overlap, but, but essentially what we want to do there is, yeah. You know, defer to the, the statutory, um, language in twenty-four VSA four to four thirteen, basically says, you know, universities, schools can go anywhere.
Noted.
Yeah, and I thought, I thought classrooms maybe should go in the definition section. And then number nine, parking commercial. I'm sorry, we're under H nine, so next page. We don't mention so, solar canopies, or as Taylor would say, solar ready, ready canopies? Or how about call them parking shading? And I would, I would just like to say something about it there. And along with that, on page five, way back in the introduction, when we have key concepts where we define things like alley. Maybe we should say something about solar canopies that they are encouraged, but we can't require solar. Almost make it, there's no definition anywhere of what the, what this is that we're talking about.
Yeah, we're not, um, we're very permissive. And, and we don't have, uh, parking commercial.
Mike, Mike, oh.
We, we got rid of that.
You got rid of it. Great, great. Sorry, so that was an old comment. Thank you. So what I'm worried about, about canopies on, so, solar canopies on parking is that we are so prescriptive on form that I'm worried that it'd be interpreted that you cannot do some, such a thing. And I, I, that's why, and I'm wanting it to be a theme. And so I'm really wanting it to be explicit what it is and that you can do it, even if we have to say what the limits are, what we're requiring. But we, uh, just to say that it's okay to shade your parking. And that that's not considered a building.
I, I've got no worries about that Chapin in terms of, you know, our, our regulation of built forms is really there on that frontage. You know, it's not, it's not back in the, in the back lot. And it, and it's, you know, I don't know, Jeff, do you mean, do you see that as an issue?
I, I don't, but I'm, at the same time, I'm, what I'm trying to do is see a place to, to put that.
Can we, can we define that in the definitions up in article like one or two, wherever that lives? Just like what a solar canopy is or solar ready, ready canopy, so we have it.
Yeah, it's page five, section one.
And of course, that's the one section I don't have open.
That's okay. And I don't have to address it now. And that's all my comments on this section. Thank you for listening.
We'll add solar canopies.
Jeff, I had just a couple of small questions for this section. One is in H, commercial uses, scrolling down to three, C. Live entertainment and drinking establishments are prohibited for the walls, blah, blah, blah. And my understanding is that we don't actually allow those uses currently in Williston. Melinda or Emily, can you clarify that?
You don't allow drinking establishments, no taverns?
Only as a accessory to restaurants. There's no.
That's correct. Only accessory to restaurants. And state law DLTC requires that food be served with alcohol.
There are no bars in the state of Vermont?
Not in Williston.
Good lord. And, and I take it an egg in a jar on the counter doesn't count?
That counts.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's state law, so, okay, I don't.
Think pub.
Yeah, so, um, so I just wanted to make sure that we're not going against state laws with that.
Restaurants, yeah, restaurants have bar seating, but you don't just have, you know, like your dive bar where it's the egg in the jar or a bag of pretzels.
Yeah, I don't know if I can come back to Vermont.
Um, okay, so that was one quick comment that probably needs a little adjusting. The other was, oh, in, in your definitions at the end, where you have performing arts center and theater. I just wondered if we can make that more broad into just arts center. Because there could be visual arts that, you know, like a museum or a gallery. Um, and I didn't see that accommodated here anywhere else. Um, so I wondered if we could broaden the, broaden away from just performing arts to include gallery spaces.
We thought, yeah, we thought that we had that included, uh, but.
I mean, it's not a big deal, but I just feel like, you know, why, why preclude it if it's, well, there's no reason for that.
Yeah, no, it, that's is, it's bad.
And I think that was the end of my comments on this section. Oh, I guess I did have a little question about drive-throughs. And my understanding was that we were really limiting drive-throughs.
Yep.
And there is some language in here about them.
Even although, uh, where is that language? Even that language is limiting. But
Right.
Basically, you can, uh, what it comes down to after you go through the building form standards, the inability to get curb cuts is you can, you can put a drive-through in your parking behind your building. Rather like that, that aerial view of, uh, the perimeter blocks I showed. If someone wants to do that, they could technically, but the form standards, uh, really they don't, there's no room left. They don't really allow you to, and they prevent curb cuts and, and they tell you directly you can't. You could put it in back. It could be something that people would, uh, you know, drive into the alley into the middle of the block and then go to a drive-through. It's possible, um, but and there's no exception for banks. So you might say we're getting tougher.
All right, thank you. That was the end of my comments. Does anyone else have any suggestions or questions for section seven? Okay, then I would say we're ready to move on to section eight, the administration.
Okay, that's blazing. And I can say, I, um, administration is, I'm, I'm not the best spokesperson for administration because it's really tailored to, um, really tailored to what, a combination of what you all already do in, in Vermont state law. But we, but the, the goal is to make it simple and easy. And to, to get people into, for a pre-application conference, so by the time they actually apply, they know what the rules are and they don't spend a lot of money on consultants uh, and get a design that's wrong. So.
I, you know, the only thing I'll add is, is first off apologies, this took so long to get to you. We went around and around and around about how to structure the section and what uh, kind of review we should have for, for form-based code in terms of how much should be administrative and how much should go to the DRB. Now, what you have in front of you is essentially a full administrative review of all development in tough corners. You know, we, we differentiate between a, you know, a minor development and a major development, you know, minor developments. You know, those are things that essentially the ZA on their own can just go ahead, review the project and issue that certificate of conformity, which is equivalent to a zoning permit, or sorry, a discretionary permit in Williston today. Those major projects, those new structures, um, you know, that's going to require a, a meeting of the project review committee, which is, um, a, a combination of municipal staff. So the public works director, fire department chief, uh, planning director, and any other staff that's needed. That will conduct the review of of the, the application and then determine whether or not the certificate of conformity can be issued. We thought about various other iterations of, of that process. Including the DRB, including some parts of the DRB. And, uh, we were very stymied by what state statute enables, which is really DRB or administrative, not a lot of in-between. So, um, open to comments from PC members on, on how comfortable they are with this relatively large change.
Yeah, um, I will just say that Matt and I talked about this yesterday in our meeting. And I raised a concern, which was that, uh, you know, I'm in, I'm in favor of transparency and in, and accountability. And so, um, you know, I would be concerned, as I made very clear, not about Matt himself, but about some future zoning administrator who, uh, you know, was maybe not entirely ethical with, with some of the ways that these things unfolded, maybe was playing favorites or overlooking things or excluding some, some folks from even reaching a certain point. And so, um, so I, and Matt would probably be better able to represent our sort of, uh, the summary of our conversation. But, um, I really en- encouraged the use of the project review committee. And I would even suggest that maybe it's not just the police, uh, sorry, fire chief and the public works director, but perhaps, uh, I don't know, maybe the chair of the hack or someone like that who's, um, more of a citizen representative, but is familiar with the issues. And then that there be some kind of, uh, public element to the checklists that would come out of a review. And again, just kind of building in a bit of kind of transparency and accountability so that in some, you know, hopefully avoidable future scenario with a zoning administrator who is, you know, maybe not doing things the way they should be, um, but there are checks on that. And, uh, I don't know, Taylor, if you've got kind of comments or thoughts on that.
I mean, I, that's what I prefer to. Frankly, I, I, you know, I just really feel like we're boxed in by what statute enables. You know, we, we theoretically could like make the project review committee technically an advisory committee, you know, but, but there certainly are, that certainly isn't a way to necessarily streamline the process like we envisioned. Um, you know, open meeting law comes into play with those, those more structured advisory committees. And that's not a bad thing necessarily. Um, you know, I just kind of struggle with like, all right, well, if we're going to have a that's not a bad thing necessarily, um, you know, I just kind of struggle with like, all right, well, if we're gonna have a advisory committee, why not just make it the DRB? Um, but, you know, but, you know, I don't know. That, that kind of gray area that exists between purely administrative and an advisory committee or commission, um, is an area that, um, I'm willing to explore. I just probably need to explore that with an attorney. Um, just to feel, to feel comfortable about putting that language in, in the bylaw.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Um, that was the only comment I had on this section. Emily, go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna speak to the discretionary permit or the DRB versus the administrative review. Um, and as staff writing staff reports for the DRB, I see the form-based code itself as that transparency. Because everything that you've been reviewing is going to translate to a checklist and developers are going to be giving us their site plans and their, uh, elevations and showing us how they meet that standard in a very prescriptive manner. Um, will, I expect that those checklists will be uploaded online. My understanding is those project review committee meetings will be made public. Um, anybody can attend and listen in and see what happens. The administrator's decision at the end of the day is appealed. Um, there have been instances in like the way the bylaws been administered in the past where sections of the bylaw would get, you know, glossed over a little bit and then we look back, why did that happen? It's because our initial checklist wasn't clear to the applicant. And form-based code in my mind fixes that because you're being very prescriptive from the beginning. And before something even gets, you know, to the development review board for a hearing, there has been so much back and forth with the applicant. Are you meeting the standards of this bylaw? Or not, and if it's not, then don't even submit it because it's going to be a failure. Um, so I, and I struggled with the development review board versus administrative approval. Um, and came around to it because I see the checklist that are going to come out of form-based code are going to create that structure for transparency and good public process from the beginning. Um, my experience administering the DRB hearings is a lot of the public comment that's heard there is not relevant to the DRB and it's nothing the DRB has jurisdiction over. But the public will still be able to engage with staff, engage at those public review committee meetings, um, and all those documents. We're just continually making more and more publicly available, posting them on the website, linking them in agendas, et cetera.
Thanks, Emily. That was really helpful. Okay, any further questions or thoughts on section eight? All right, I, yeah, go ahead, Chapin, and then we're gonna move on.
I don't want anyone to fall off the chair, but I have no comments on this section. I felt like it was right to leave it up to, uh, to staff, uh, what they thought would work, but I really, uh, appreciate your comments, Megan, and, and I'm glad if Taylor and staff look at it some more, but thank you all.
Megan, are, you know, are you and the rest of the PC okay? You know, as written in this, this idea of this idea of some sort of hybrid review would be something that we can look at later this spring?
Yeah, I'm definitely fine with it. Um, as I said, you know, I just, uh, want to make sure we don't have some future rogue ZA who's, uh, causing us all out of heartache. Jeff, go ahead.
Happens.
I wanna, uh, it, it sounds like, Megan, what you're concerned about, you just don't want anybody to go outside the rules. And, uh, one of the first places we worked, uh, for, uh, form-based code municipal was, uh, in Arlington County, where they have a, a neighborhood association, um, powerhouse, they killed so many projects that, uh, you know, they talked about the Arlington Way and they take their hat off and put it over their hand, which is, which is a developer comes forward and then the citizens spend seven or eight months to tell them no and cost them, you know, half a million dollars in soft costs, but for that form-based code, we got people to accept an administrative review. However, they, the, we did have, uh, there was a watchdog function where, uh, people, in that case, from the neighborhood associations, saw things come through and I, to me, I'm, I'm wondering if having those checklists wouldn't uh, eliminate the possibility that somebody's, uh, cheating. Um, if those, if those are, if they're somehow official, that those are, are public, people wouldn't be able to see, oh, this is coming through and check, 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 yes, it meets the rules. Um.
Great, okay. Yeah, I think we've got enough feedback here. Um, are you, are you happy with that, Taylor? Are you comfortable with leaving it as is given this conversation?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Um, okay, so let's, uh, move on from these sections and our next um, item on the agenda is, uh, the merging FBC into the current bylaw. Um, I really, I think it was Emily who did the work of creating this summary of amendments. The memo, um, that was linked in the agenda. Uh, and I thought that was very clearly done and really helpful, so I don't know if, um, Emily, if you or maybe Melinda, I guess, is sharing your screen. Okay, and Emily, did you want to discuss this or do you just want to open it to questions?
Yeah, I think for efficiency, we can open it to questions.
Okay. I really didn't have any myself. Um, I thought it was pretty clear uh, about how we would, you know, where there would be changes, where there would not, and then, um, kind of the nature of the changes that would need to be made. Melinda, we're seeing your notes as well as, uh, the memo. Chapin, go ahead.
I thought, I just want to say kudos, this looked really well done and I really appreciate the work. Thanks.
Yeah.
All right, even I can understand it.
Thank you, Sheila. Jill, go ahead.
Oh, no.
Oh, you're clapping. I'm sorry. I, I thought it was a hand, but it's a clap.
Yeah, it's a really helpful shirt.
Yeah, okay, great. Um, all right, excellent. So hopefully we can move on then to the next item, which I'm trying to find in my. Um, I think, given that the memo was so clear, we probably don't need to, to go through chapter by chapter, um, the amendments, uh, which was also really helpful to have the link, although I did not go in and look at every single one of them, Emily, I'm sorry. But I did just want to say, um, Emily, was there anything that you wanted to call out in any of those?
Yeah, I think mainly Matt would probably be looking for some feedback on the stuff in the yellow. So in his introduction, he gave an overview of growth management that it would still be a limitation in the growth center. Its administration process would change from, you know, prior to a discretionary permit to being part of the certificate of conformity. Um, the specific plan is a big lever to, for the commission to consider. I drafted up texts both in the affirmative, allowing specific plan and also in the negative to prohibit specific plan. Um, as it's written now, it would allow it for two years after the adoption of the form-based code. Uh, but then specific plan would sunset in the growth center. And that there are limitations to using specific plan in the growth center that it couldn't undermine some of those key standards of the form-based code and the way you would amend the regulating plan would follow the regulating plan amendment procedures. Um, I think those are the big two, um, to think about.
Okay. Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, and in fact, it, you know, Chapin mentioned earlier that he wanted to make sure we talked about workload. Um, one of the things that Matt and I talked about was the ways that specific plans tend to derail our, our usual flow and take enormous amounts of time. And, um, uh, my preference would be that we really try to minimize those as much as possible, whether that's through, um, something like this that is limiting them in the growth center. Um, and then also just in general, um, letting the development community know that we won't, that the planning commission cannot just drop everything in order to um, take on their, um, their specific plan, especially ones that, and they inevitably involve a lot of citizen outreach and a huge amount of staff time. Um, so I, I'm a little worried that we're going to see more specific plans in the near future and, um, and I'm concerned that they are real-time sinks, so. Um, so, yeah, so I'm, I'm happy to see some kind of consideration of limiting them in this language. Chapin, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, um, I agree with that and I, we have a chance to, to reject a specific plan right from the beginning. And maybe we should do that more, so we, in a sense, we have that in our control because we have to say to proceed to the next step right at the beginning, so.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Something to keep in mind.
Jeff posted, uh, a chat saying, uh, we need, even need to have them.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that we do.
You don't need to, it's not required in the statute.
Right.
Not to stir up trouble.
Right, I think we should keep that in mind. Yeah.
What I can do is if you decide to warn a public hearing tonight and you want me to switch the, to no specific plan, I can, you know, switch that language in the bylaw to say no specific plan in growth center for the hearing draft.
I, I mean, my preference would be in that direction because, you know, we've put such enormous effort into the form-based code that essentially, uh, specific plans are almost inevitably going to be trying to you know, get around the, you know, various kinds of limitations and so forth um, of, of form-based code. And, uh, so I, I don't know, do we, do, do others have an opinion? Should we for this form-based code area, should we specifically say no specific plans or would you like to leave some kind of time limit in there? Feel free to jump in.
The idea of sunsetting at two years certainly means we have more flexibility for two years. If that, I like that there's an end to the, end of them, whether it's now or in two years.
Okay. Any other opinions, one way or the other? Okay, Emily, I would, I would say let's, let's go ahead and, um, and, and take, change that language, uh, and then, you know, it'll be in part of the public hearing. We can get some feedback on that.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you.
Does the commission have questions about the other yellow sections?
And this is the growth management part or?
Yeah, there's growth management. Um, the others are.
And then TDR.
Yeah, density, TDR, watershed health and transportation impact fees.
Right, okay. Any comments or concerns? I'm fine with the way things are written.
What is, what is TDR?
Transfer of development rights. Yeah, if you recall, it's the mechanism by which, um, oh, I should probably just have Taylor explain this or Emily. Oh, not Taylor, okay.
Yeah, it's in Williston, it's from the rural part of town into the growth center. So say I could build 20 houses on my hundred acres in the rural part of town, I'm gonna forfeit that right and give those units to a lot in the growth center. Um, I, I think, Melinda, correct me if I'm wrong, it's maybe only been used once or twice.
Wouldn't say forfeit, I'd say, I'd say sell.
Sell is a better term.
I, yeah, I, I don't know if we want to deal with this here. Is it okay if I talk for a second?
Yeah.
It, uh, I just want to say one reason it's only been used once or twice is that we don't have a development rights bank. And so if people, if you don't have a seller and a buyer of the transfer, the transfer at the same time, it doesn't happen. And if we really want to encourage it, I think we need to set up a bank where somebody can do it at it, not at the same time.
And I think at least one of those two cases, it was the same landowner. Transferred development rights from a rural piece of property that he owned into.
Um, it, it was, yeah, it was Al Senical's project transferred rights from, um, where Keystone is now to Cottonwood and uh, Snyder also transferred from a parcel north of the Allenburg, right north of Finney into Finney Crossing.
Mm-hmm, right, yeah, so it tends to not really live up to its um, promise for many reasons.
Right, although the conservation commission at one point was working on trying to strengthen the TDR and you know, provide some mechanism for, for some kind of a bank for TDR and is still considering that, but, um, this, if, if density is not going to be a thing anymore in the growth center, then some other receiving area would have to be applicable, like maybe the RZD, but that would be a discussion.
Right, okay, so. It sounds good to leave it as is then.
It says that basically it goes away, right? Yeah.
Right, and then it, but there could be future conversations about other types of TDR. Um, okay, and then, uh, you wanted feedback on sorry, I'm having trouble reading the screen. Watershed health. Um.
And I want to say I strongly support that we investigate that and figure it out because it's a different animal when you're in a dense zone. Just the way we think we need shared, um, stormwater management. I feel like there are different ways to handle it than in the other parts of the town and we should, a, a perfect example. Well, yeah, I just, I, I think we should give it future work.
Okay. All right, can you make notice that then, Emily?
Yes, we can.
Melinda, whoever, okay.
And I'm glad Melinda's on the call because Melinda does that consistent with what the conservation mission or you as conservation planner think?
Yeah, I think the conservation commission would like to see some flexibility and some ability to, um, use mitigation as a tool. Uh, especially in the growth center.
Okay. All right, great. Any other comments on this section? And do you have what you needed from us, Emily and Melinda?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, all right, uh, and I'm a little confused here on the agenda. There's, it just says official map revised 123021. Official zoning map revised. Are we meant to go over those or is that, were those just references for us?
So, um, those are references only because we were trying to collect a package of pretty much everything that we would need, um, for a hearing. And given that, the idea was to have the official map follow this, a similar track of adoption, be it, be hopefully adopted along with the form-based code. Um, so that's why we included, um, this last, this, um, most recent draft. Um, so that, just so you would have everything to look at, um, and also the official zoning map was revised to include the overlay for the Form Based Code District, no um, big change, that was really the only change to the official zoning map, so feel free to um, look at those, um, we can, we can look at. I don't know whether it's worth looking at the official map right now because we, we do have other stuff that you wanna kind of get through, but, but know that it's up there and, and feel free to look at those. If you have comments, you can pass them along.
Okay, great, thank you, um, Chapin, do you have a comment? You're muted.
I did, but I was mistaken, I'm looking at that, I somehow didn't look at those two links before, so I don't have comment, but I will look at them.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, the um, keeping an eye on the time again, we are at eight fifty-three. Um, and we have a couple of decisions to make. This section called wrap-up review uh, looks like it covers the regulating plan and the regu- regulating plan map. Um, Emily, do you have a sense of, like, how thoroughly are we supposed to be diving into that tonight, or were these again, kind of more reference materials?
Um, these are more reference materials, if anybody has, you know, final questions or comments before it goes to hearing draft.
Okay, um, I see that Chapin and Jeff both had raised their hands, I do have one question myself, which is um, I was wondering if we were changing the names of the areas. We, well, in one of the surveys that we did maybe a month or so ago, there was a question about what, you know, what should these different areas be called instead of things like Urban General? And I wondered if those changes were filtering through or if we were keeping the original language?
I have not circled back on that, I think
Okay.
there were some really good suggestions provided, so what I can do as part of the hearing draft is include some of those name options and then during the warned public hearing, rename those four areas, I think Alex had some really good suggestions particularly.
Okay, great. Thanks. Um, that was my only main question, uh, Chapin, go ahead.
I was just gonna say that um, I did review them and I appreciate the things that were added that are noted here and I saw them. And, but the, um, I will say that the North-South Road in the Peter Judge property didn't go where I intended it to go and that there's, we're missing a green space under the power lines there. So just, just feedback, Jeff has his hand up.
Go ahead.
I, I could share the screen and show you the uh, the green on Holland Lane and Market and, and the the location that functions, that works under the um, through the Judge's property.
Okay, I think Melinda's sharing it.
Yeah, could you zoom in on that? Chapin, your alignment didn't work. It, it was just, it had problems. When you pull Day, Day Lane down, it eats up, it eats up too much property and, and intersects um, with that backside of the Judge's property much too far down, it's a little disturbing. So the, the place, I looked at alignments with Meridian, Day Lane, the one that is in the middle was the most efficient in terms of um, not taking buildable land away from, from those, from those owners, it, it kind of fit.
Um, where it's running, right where the pointer is, is exactly where I had hoped we'd have another pocket park because it's under the power lines and it's grass now. So it's.
You've got, you've got miles of under the, under the power lines, that's um, and there's gonna be, you can't build anything left, to the left of it, so that could end up being a a pocket park.
It could be to the left of it, I just would like it shown as a pocket park there because uh, except for the new one shown at Holland Lane, uh, we're just lacking public green space in that whole quadrant.
It's, yeah, it is somewhat of a problem that that's, most of Finney Crossing is a done deal. Um, you could put something there, it's not really a great place for it.
Uh, I, I would like to, you know, behind Lenny's shoes is what we're talking about.
Yeah, but I.
Anyway, that's, that's my feedback, as I still would like to see a part there.
Okay. Um, other comments on the amount, on the regulating plan map? Um, I had one, a couple small questions, one is um, no offense, but can we not have Hor Avenue?
Okay.
Um.
Okay, I was just trying to honor, now.
Yeah, I know. But there, you know, I'm sure he would be the first to admit that his last name causes some consternation. Um, okay, so that was one little comment. Um, my other concern, and I don't think we can deal with this tonight, is um, the question of uh, Wright Avenue. As you know, from the start, I've been an advocate of Route Two, the set, the eastern section of Route Two being our main street. Um, and now we have a proposal which may or may not go through to build something that is pretty incompatible on Wright Avenue. So I realized that we need to kind of wait and see what happens with that, but I would just like people to be thinking about, um, you know, what's, what's the, the next best option? If, uh, if Wright Avenue gets gobbled up by an Aldi and bunch of parking and some other things, so um, again, I don't think that's something that we need to discuss tonight and we will have more information at some point about that application, but just kind of a heads up. Uh, okay, so, any other comments? Okay, great, um, last section to be discussing is the Public Realm and Street Maps section, um. Again, my question is whether there was something we need, we needed to provide feedback here or if this was just informational? And maybe Emily is.
Thinking it's just informational, but.
Okay.
Yeah, just informational, if anybody has final thoughts or questions.
Okay.
I, I know the color was a big question and it didn't print out well on this one, so I'll double check with Jack before the hearing draft that it's um, more color variety.
Yeah, that would be really helpful, those, those three greens that were virtually the same were, were pretty tricky and the, and the multiple oranges, the same, same issue. Um, okay, so here we are, we now have the option to um, warn a public hearing for February first to go forward with uh, bringing Form Based Code to the public hearing process. Um, keep in mind, that does not mean that we can't still talk about it um, at our next meeting on January eighteenth, uh, and it also, we can certainly make tweaks at the public hearing uh, for, you know, within the, within the bounds of the Form Based Code. So um, Chapin, do you have a comment?
Um, I'll move that we warn a public hearing on the schedule that we were given in the um, email. Um, and again, I have significant reservations about some parts of this, but I feel like it's so worth moving forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, who, I'm sorry, who seconded it?
Shayla, I am.
Oh Shayla, that's fine, I just um, couldn't, couldn't see from the, the screen. Alex, do you have a comment or a question, or are you ready to vote?
Yeah, no, I, I'm ready to vote, I, I agree with Chapin that it's worth moving it forward, I, I still hold my reservations about parking. And specifically, I would like to address that, like, that we have a higher limit, something like one point two per unit plus half of a unit per additional bedroom, I think that would be much better minimum, but other than that, I'm willing to move it forward and I can just lodge that as something we can consider along with public feedback on that, I don't think it needs to be in before public hearing.
Okay, thank you. All right, so let's go ahead and take a vote then, um, Shayla, you'll, I, you'll have to vocalize your vote. Um, those in, uh, oh, actually, do we have any further discussion before we take a vote, any further comments?
Well, I have a question, so I, because I have the same concerns as Alex.
Yeah.
And um, so if, if during the public hearing or whenever we, we determine to change it, we can go ahead and do that, do we then need to have another public hearing, or?
No. Yeah, that, we can change it. Yeah. Okay. Any further discussion or questions? Clarifications? Okay, that's great, so either with a digital or real hand or your voice Shayla, can uh, all those in favor of the motion to move this to a public hearing on February first? Um, please raise your hand or say aye.
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 Okay, uh, looked unanimous to me, I won't bother asking for abstentions or nay votes. Um, and I apologize, Emily, I think you had, somebody had written out the the phrasing for this, and I, I failed to I don't know, or maybe I'm thinking of something else, um, actually, I'm thinking of the budget thing, never mind, um, the motion. Um, we, okay, so that passed, um, Chapin, go ahead.
Can I make three quick comments about it, the first is that yes, and I plan to, the things that I don't like to bring them into the public review process, it, we, we as planning commissioners are allowed to make suggestions during the public review and they may be adopted or not. Um, the second is, it's probably a time to just give a huge thanks to staff and contracted people and Taylor for this incredible work, as well as all of you guys for working on it.
Yes, definitely.
And and now I forgot my third thing to say. I'll, I'll come back later, I also have queued up um, the pictures that I have of solar canopies to share. If I could share my screen at some point, um, I, I could probably take fifteen seconds to show them.
I think I've enabled it for you, Chapin, but.
Is, is this the right time?
Okay, uh, hold on one second because I'm, I'm a little concerned, I'm realizing that we did not make a decision on our letter to um, to the select board about the capital budget. Um, my sense, Emily, am I correct, that is that we should, we should take a vote on that?
Yeah, a vote sounds good.
Okay, so if we could, if we could please just go back to that memo. Um, whoever's sharing your screen. Um, and realizing that this may need a little bit of cleanup uh, because it was a, a group project. Um, or, I guess it almost looked like it's already cleaned up.
I think that's the original rather than.
Oh, that's the original, okay.
Yeah, the static PDF is the original, I saw the track changes before the meeting and it looked like Chapin's comments about the um, the police cruisers and the snowplow happening this year um, is in there.
So, I, I thought my comments would need to be cleaned up, yeah, we did look at it before, my comments would need to be cleaned up and I if people don't object to them, then I'm fine with them being cleaned up before it's finalized, but we can vote on it.
Um, so I do think we should try to take a vote on this tonight because uh, it's pressing and um, we want to get our thoughts in there. Um, can we, can we ask for a little bit of editorial cleanup? But go ahead and vote on the substance of this memo to the select board. Okay, I'll entertain a motion then.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? To take a vote on this memo?
I'll second.
Thank you, Alex.
I'm sorry, Megan, I'm
Yes.
are we saying that it is or is not in line with the goal?
Um, so then, oh yes, good, good question, thank you Shayla, um. Chapin, you made the motion, what is?
I did. I forgot that I was supposed to say that part. Um, to me, they went from an F to a D last year to this year. Uh, there's effort shown, but it didn't, uh, it's not in conformance and so, however, the main reason it's not is because we don't have an energy coordinator, not because people didn't try. So how do we say that, um? Could we just say it's not fully in line, could we just say fully?
Right. I think, well, it's phrased, is or is not.
Right, but could we instead say it's not fully in line because we want, you know, they did make an effort and.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, I, I like that, thank you, Chapin.
Yeah, okay, so this is what we're voting on now, thank you Shayla for raising that. So, the question, the motion on the floor is uh, do we agree that this um, this budget, this capital budget is not fully in line with the goals and policies of the twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-four Williston Comprehensive Plan? Um, and so, any further discussion before we vote? Okay, those in favor of the motion that says, that is not in line, fully in line with the um, comprehensive plan? Vote, uh, uh, raise your hand now.
Aye.
Okay, thanks Shayla. Was that you, Alex?
Yeah, I, I didn't, wasn't me, but I.
Oh, okay, all right, um, I think that was and Jill, I, I'm sorry, I didn't have you on my screen, was that, okay, great. All right, so that looks to be unanimous and so Emily, can you um, pass that along for us?
Yes, first thing tomorrow.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much. Okay, um, so we are over time by ten minutes and I want to be conscious of people's time, particularly because I would really like to just make a quick comment, which is that I believe that all of us have been stretched too thin recently. Um, that Form Based Code we had agreed would be a big push, it has been a big push and yet we've also had to keep a lot of our regular work going and that has been extremely taxing on this commission and I want to thank you all for sticking with it and for maintaining your energy through this. Um, and I apologize that I was not able to be at the last meeting, I was very, very sick, uh, not with COVID. Uh, and, um, and so I appreciate so, so much that Chapin was able to step in, I, I'm very grateful. Um, what I would have proposed to Matt is that we, once we're done with Form Based Code, is that we really talk about some strategies to kind of scale back some of the work that uh, that we are expected to do weekly, kind of week to week uh, or meeting to meeting. Um, thus, the move towards surveys is helpful, but it still requires virtually the same workload. Um, it helps our meetings go faster, but it's essentially the still, still the same amount of preparation and I'm finding for myself that the preparation is overwhelming. And so I just want you all to know that we are having a conversation about workload. Um, we are working on some suggestions and strategies to pull back on the amount of preparation that is required. Um, because I'm worried that people will just not attend meetings or even will resign and we don't want those things to happen. Um, so if you, if any of you have suggestions or ideas, uh, you know, one of mine was, was like, okay, specific plans. So if you, if any of you have suggestions or ideas, uh, you know, one of mine was, was like, okay, specific plans. Like, those have to be kind of pushed, uh, pushed back on in various ways. Um, and, and the expectations that we would drop everything else to do those needs to really be minimized. Um, other thoughts or strategies that you might have, please bring those to our next meeting and we can have a more, um, you know, try to carve out a few minutes to talk about that. And, um, so that was my last comment and Chapin, do you have a final?
I just wanted to say, we, we haven't done the minutes and I suggest we do them next time and.
I do too, especially because I couldn't get in.
I just wanted to share that I could not make edits to the most recent ones, even though I got a code.
See them, I couldn't get it, the system wouldn't let me in with the code.
I could read them and see them, but I couldn't edit.
Okay, so we will sort that out and we will deal with both December seventh and twenty-first minutes at our next meeting on February, uh, sorry, January eighteenth. Okay.
And this is a, um, solar canopy, uh, parking lot. Can you see that?
Yeah.
This is another one. Let me do this, this is the one behind the, just using Google Street View, the one behind the Unitarian Church in Burlington. And this is a smaller one by Sun Common Local in Vermont. So I just wanted, when I talk about solar canopies, I'm talking about this kind of thing.
Great. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, thank you for staying late. Thank you for your energy and attention to all of these and thank you to staff and Taylor and Jeff for keeping us rolling. Have a great evening, see you in two weeks.
Thanks, everybody.
Bye.
Thank you.
Bye now.